We've been called the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to be held on Monday, May the 6th, 2024 at 7:00 PM here in the City Council chambers. Where our invocation tonight will be from Pastor John Harwell from the New Life Christian Church United. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. Loving God, for the goodness of this day we thank you, and for the opportunity to come together tonight, we also thank you. We come together tonight as people who might have different understandings. We come together as people who might have different visions, but we come together tonight as people who care. And so we invite your presence that the conversations and decisions that would be shared this evening might all be the best for all concerned. To that end, we ask for knowledge of your will for us and for the power to carry that out. We thank you for the goodness of this city. We thank you for the weaknesses of this city, and we pray that all may be strengthened, that all might work together for the good of all. We ask these things together, and I pray them in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Harwell. Pro-call Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Boyer.
Here.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Massingham.
Here.
Councilman Depew.
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tim Parson.
Here.
Mayor Cornman.
Here.
We have seven persons.
Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, item six, our citizens input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Seeing none. Item seven, presentation of a proclamation. The mayor will present a proclamation to the National Association of Letter Carriers, Branch 1016, in recognition of letter carriers Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive Day. So if you guys want to come on up? The City Council consider request to approve the discharge of fireworks inside city limits on Saturday, June the 15th, 2024 for the Juneteenth celebration. Ms. Nikki Johnson to present.
This will be our eighth year during the Johnson celebration. We will have several events for the kids. We are also doing a basketball tournament. This year it's getting larger and larger each year, so we would like fireworks coming in for the celebration.
Ms. Johnson and her group, they work really well with Chief Moffett and coordinate all that to make sure that safety is there and the fire crews there on standby for them too when they do discharge their fireworks. She's right, we have done this several years now for them for the Juneteenth celebration.
At Bacon Park?
Yes, Bacon Park.
Bacon Park?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, as she said that we've done this every year and we've approved this and we've not had any problems, so with that being said, I move that we allow her to discharge our works on the same date.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Item B, the City Council will consider bids received for the Wolf Creek Trail Project, TAP 5100012. Manager winners?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the city received a grant from MoDOT's TAP program to develop a trail that would connect our city network of trails and sidewalks to the Wolf Creek Trail. The project includes grants, contribution from the Parks and Rec Department, and some other funding sources. Six bids were received with the low bidder being Hesling Construction with a bid of $973,735.46. This project is over budget by approximately $91,000. Under the recommendation of Billy Cobb and Smith &amp; Company, I recommend you accept the bid from Hesling and Smith &amp; Company will work towards finding ways to bring this project within budget. There are also some other potential funding sources that could be secured prior to any construction beginning.
I make a motion, move to the voting session to be held May the 20th?
I'd like to discuss it because we'll move it on if we don't have a correct dollar figure and know where everything's coming from.
You know, none of our city funds are going to be spent on this. I'm not asking for any of our city funds. This just gets it to the next step with MoDOT so that we have this bid in place and we can now start working with MoDOT to look at places we could change the project scope and...
But we have funds coming out of the Parks Department, right?
I think that the Parks Department Board has committed some money, $20,000, I think, is what the Parks Department had committed to the project.
I don't really know what we're approving yet. I mean...
We're approving the bid, but there has been no notice to proceed and no contract signed. So once the bid is approved, then Smith &amp; Company will go back and work with MoDOT to make some cuts and adjustments. The Missouri Department of Conservation and the National Forest Service are also involved in this project, and so we're looking at ways to adjust to meet all of their requirements and specifications to bring the total project down to that cost within budget. And like I said, the chamber has been kind of the driving force behind this. They are the ones that have secured the grant from Missouri Department of Conservation, and they're also looking at other potential funding sources that would be eligible for them to apply for.
So this will go out PP Highway?
Yes.
How far would this take it to?
It goes all the way out to the Wolf Creek Trail, yes.
So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I have another question.
Go ahead.
On the design of the trail, has there already been preliminary design or conceptual?
It's been designed fully, yes. I mean, I think the grant, oh man, the grant was awarded from MoDOT more than a year ago. There's been a lot of back and forth and changes and adjustments. They've been working with some right-of-way donations in places where they need right-of-way donations to construct the trail on. So yeah, it's been designed and redesigned two or three different times, yeah.
So is that a curb roadway, adjacent to the roadway, or is it an off-roadway trail?
Both. Some places it's off the roadway, some places it's closer to the roadway.
I mean, is it concurrent right with the pavement of the road?
I think there may be a few sections where it is adjacent to the road, yes.
Probably with guardrails, barriers?
Probably not guardrails, probably curb where it's adjacent to the roadway at.
Okay. I just had some concern about the safety, you know, when people go down PP Highway, vice versa, right on the road.
That is definitely, you know, taken into consideration with, you know, it's designed to the MoDOT standards because of what is built on their roadway has to be designed to meet their safety standards and their design standards.
So we'll get to see those design specs before we vote on it?
I can send you them to them, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks.
Any further discussion on the matter?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The City Council will consider the purchase of park benches in a partnership with the Poplar Bluff Parks and Recreation Department, the Poplar Bluff Housing Authority, and the Poplar Bluff Municipal Library District. City manager, winners?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Lanny and I have been in discussions with a company called Canvas for a few months now regarding some park benches that are made from retired wind turbine blades. They have gotten some corporate sponsorships for some of them, and Lanny and I have kind of been, you know, they're definitely unique and different than anything we have in town. Just kind of through our discussions, kind of what might be a place to put these if we decided to proceed. We knew that the Housing Authority was making some improvements and wanting to develop a small park area at their Hillcrest apartment location. The library has done a lot of improvements to their property on Second Street, their main library, and then recently bought the old apartment building that was adjacent to them. They tore that down and are kind of working to develop some outdoor area there. And then, of course, with the demolition of our old City Hall and, you know, hopefully future plans to build there, you know, we kind of thought that this might be a unique area for us to kind of have some cohesiveness, kind of a little unique character to that area as we all, four of our groups, are moving to improve that section of town. So we all met, Lanny, myself, Tammy, with the Housing Authority and the library. We're looking at 10 benches. Total cost is $32,998.73, which would be split four ways between the four different groups, which would amount to the city's responsibility being $8,249.68. The library board is actually meeting this evening discussing the proposal. The Housing Authority Board met last week and approved their portion of the proposal. And then the Parks and Recreation Department, their board meets on May the 20th to consider this proposal. Like I said, these are a little unique. There are some that are even the Housing Authority liked because they looked like they could use them for bus stop areas for their residents, for SMTS, and just to kind of create a little unique character in that portion of town as we're working to redevelop it and improve it. Lanny and Tammy are both here. If you have any questions or if one of them would like to come in and say anything? Yes?
Are those, I guess I could ask Lanny, but are they made out of fiberglass then?
Lanny?
Lanny, you want to come up and maybe I can, if you have any questions?
Lanny's going to struggle to remember, just like I'm struggling to remember.
I don't know if they're made out of fiberglass or not, I'll be honest with you, but I know when they talked to us about it, that it was the, they take the retired blade and then they put a coating. There's some of them that are finished and there'll be a couple of them that aren't finished where you can actually take it, make it a project of that specific area or whoever you may have. I mean, obviously, there's some people that will just pay them just because, but we would actually mean the payment this time. But as far as what, they're anywhere from like a 30 to 40, 40-year shelf life on them because of the way they coat them. Of course, they're retired wind blades, so they're strong as can be. Again, what he said, or what Mr. Winters said was, we all sat down, and I know it's got to be for the first time in many people's lives here, that all four of us sat down at the same table and talked about this stuff and had a unique setting to where with the demolition of City Hall, with the library being there, our park office, we even can move this into downtown or our little mini park down there. It is unique. It's a bit pricey if we were paying full price for it, but it's like a buy one, get one sale, so it really gives us a unique experience, so. So it's a composite lumber bench made from recycled plastics, two armrests formed from the blade and the stabilizer, recycled aluminum base and frame.
Personally, I think unique is probably a good term for them, but for me personally, they're uniquely unappealing. I went on their website and looked at the different benches and the ones with the canopy over them, and I don't think that they are really going to blend in like, and we don't even have a design for City Hall yet, so it seems premature to buy something like this, especially at this price, to get those, start putting them in before we even have a building to put them in front of. So personally, I would be more in favor of the type of benches they have out at the VA Hospital. I don't know if anybody's seen those out by the main entrance. They're steel benches, you know, they're super solid. They're cut in the back like with laser cuttings, you know, VA Medical Center, you can put whatever, you know, wording or logo we can have in those. And they cost about half as much, so I mean, you know...
They're made here, or are they?
I looked at 14 other websites that have benches that have, they're steel benches, you know, mostly vertical or horizontal steel slatted benches with like aluminum ends on them. Depends on if you get a six or an eight-foot bench, they cost anywhere from $1,000 to $1,800 each.
Steel benches?
Steel benches, yes. And so, you know, if you get one of those super fancy ones like they have out at the VA Hospital, that may add another $1,000 to the bench, but you know, then you're talking $3,000, which is what you're paying for these plastic and, you know...
What kind of warranty do they have, you know?
Fiberglass ones.
What kind of warranty would they have?
Warranty.
The ones he's talking about.
I think those were warranty for a long time.
Well, and again, I mean, I will respectfully disagree with what you're saying about it only because that, you know, when you do research and all you're doing is to say, "I don't like it," and then "I want to discard it," you will, obviously, I could go find five other things right now that could be better than this proposal. And it is, it's just one of those things where we can just disagree on it because where you say it's very unappealing, I think most people would look at it and see it as very appealing, but that's just me. You know, that's my personal opinion of it. And whenever it comes to looking at, because I've looked at plenty of benches, and just because you look it up over here doesn't necessarily mean what you're saying right now, a steel bench, which a steel bench is the most uncomfortable bench to sit on, and that's why you get it probably at the VA Hospital, nothing gets to VA Hospital, but you're going to go the cheapest route. So if you go from a steel bench and go down the rabbit hole that we can always talk about is that it's real easy to do this, so, I mean, it just comes down to if it's not, you know, plausible, then it's not possible. But I think it's unfair to say that it's not unique and that it's very unappealing, so, but that's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, not only do I feel that way about the aesthetics of it, I think they're too expensive, so.
Is there any further questions for Lanny?
Twenty-five here.
Twenty-five, okay.
Yeah.
All right, Lanny, we appreciate it, thank you for your answers.
Thank you, thank you, Tammy.
I make a motion to move this to the voting session to be held on May the 20th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the City Council will consider bids received for bailiff services for the City of Poplar Bluff Municipal Court. Manager winners?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we utilize a private security firm to provide bailiff services for Municipal Court. The firm providing this service has resigned. We advertised for bids and received two bids. Integrity Tactical Protective Services, their bid was $39.95 per hour, and Citadel Security was the bid of $35 an hour. I'm recommending we accept the bid from Citadel. Just to provide a little perspective, if we had to utilize our police department and patrolmen for this service, we'd be paying overtime as to not pull an officer off the street. The current patrolman overtime hourly rate is $34.59, which does not include the city's costs for fringe benefits and work comp expenses, et cetera, that are paid on top of that hourly rate. If a patrolman were not to be available, then that hourly rate would of course be higher to pay someone of a higher rank. Any questions?
The last sentence that you just said, could you explain that?
I mean, if there were not a patrolman available to fulfill the role of bailiff, then you would be looking at, you know, getting a sergeant or a captain or someone like that would be higher ranking, higher paid, yes.
Has this been discussed with the police department, whether they have, if they thought they have people available?
Yes, yes, and it's, you know, Mark, I'm not sure if you recall, I know that the four years, prior to me becoming city manager, we were already using bailiffs in Municipal Court. I don't know when it actually started, using the bailiff in Municipal Court.
I don't recall when it started, it's been quite a while, so.
Has a bailiff, a contracted bailiff been successfully utilized over the years?
Yes, yeah, it has. We haven't had any issues to speak of inside our courtroom, yeah.
So the main difference is the fringe benefits paid out?
Fringe benefits and the workman's comp and the cost, yeah.
That's probably, what, half the cost of the salary then?
Exactly. When you figure in the retirement and workman's comp costs and things like that, yeah.
So if it's contracted out to the bailiff, to the contractor, the police department has no issues with that?
They do not. They actually appreciate it. It takes less burden off of them.
They're thrilled.
I'm good.
I'll second the motion.
I don't know if we had a motion on the floor yet, did we?
Thought we had one. I make a motion, we move it to the voting session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the City Council will consider bids received for Dell servers. Manager winners?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we recently solicited bids for three new Dell servers. These servers will replace servers that are at the end of their useful life. This will also reduce the number of servers that are current, of four that we are running to three. The reduction is due to some changes made internally by our IT staff in the past few years. I think Mr. Massingham can relate. We received four bids, today's computer being the low bidder, a total of $25,047. And that is, I will, just while we're on this topic, we'll say, you know, that Michael Pry has done a great job in finding ways where we get what we need from an IT standpoint and IT security standpoint, and also reducing the burden, the financial burden that we have. You know, just as an example, the new phone system we had that's gone cloud-based has taken a lot of this, a lot of pressure off these servers, a lot of the need for the servers, and that's part of the reason why we're reducing them from four down to three. So I will commend Michael on his work in getting some of the stuff back in line where we was a little extravagant in the past. It's now becoming a little more in line with where we need to be, for sure.
So it's really taken us almost 10 years to get away from the Kaplan fiasco of the computers?
Well, I wasn't going to say it, yeah.
I was.
Exactly, yeah.
It was a nightmare the whole time I was there.
It is, I mean, you know, just even with the old phone system that literally took up a lot of server space and required a lot of ongoing and continued maintenance, that was a lot of it more than anybody locally could even deal with, and we were, you know, still using firms from out of state to, you know, it got to the point where locally, we couldn't even add extensions to the old phone system. So, you know, it's really been a step-by-step process to get rid of, and those things coming to end of life and us upgrading to things that are more suited for our size and our needs and not a little over the top, so.
Yeah, the computer system, I was told in 2015 was more sophisticated than the computer system that the city of Denver, Colorado had, and that came from a consulting firm that we used.
Oh, good gosh.
That's Mark, just had to say my piece.
I make a motion that we move this to the voting session to be held tonight.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the City Council will consider a cost share agreement with Butler County and the Poplar Bluff Chamber of Commerce to asphalt one half of the road leading to Brick's Off-Road Park prior to Rock the Country concert. Manager winners?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm asking that you consider contributing $70,000 from our tourism tax to match $70,000 each from Butler County and the Poplar Bluff Chamber of Commerce to purchase asphalt to pave a portion of County Road 484. The county will perform the labor required to pave this road. You know, this really, this request is coming upon the upcoming Rock the Country tour, you know, based on another concert tour that they host in Alabama, you know, where they're seeing a $10 million annual economic impact. This will also have a significant impact on our city, our local businesses, and our local hotels. The tourism tax by ordinance can only be used on tourism-related projects, and this proposal falls within the guidelines written within our city ordinance as a tourism project. You know, we do a lot of tourism promotion partnering with the Chamber of Commerce, and this would just be, this would be another one of those opportunities for us to promote tourism within our city and county, partnering with the Chamber of Commerce, and in this case also with the Butler County Commissioners.
Mr. Winters, I've talked to a lot of people since I learned about this, I learned about this last Thursday.
Actually, it was either Monday or Tuesday. I was out of town on Thursday at the city manager's conference.
Anyway, last week?
It was Monday or Tuesday, I was out of town Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Okay, last week, yeah, it was right before you left town. Okay, so while you were gone, I talked to several people, and there was a theme that kept coming up, and the theme was, "We can't do that because it's not legal because of the wording of the state and the Poplar Bluff, you know, state statute and Poplar Bluff ordinance." And so I've been trying to figure that out, and thank you for pointing me in the right direction because I wasted a lot of time looking at old expired state statutes.
True.
And so, once I got on the right page there, then I started seeing how it works, and it's a little bit complicated and convoluted, and could you explain to us how... it's a little bit complicated and convoluted, and could you explain to us how it's supposed to work, how the funding, because you're proposing to pay for this out of the tourism tax?
Yes.
Trust fund, correct?
Yes.
So, it says in the Poplar Bluff ordinance that it's to be spent in the city, inside the Poplar Bluff, in the city of Poplar Bluff. Explain how we make that financing work, given those words in the ordinance.
So, our tourism tax comes from a 4% tax that we have on motel rooms in the city limits, and that tax, at least 25% of that tax has to be used on tourism promotion. We do that a lot with the Chamber of Commerce. For example, the CDO's arcs website, we support about $50,000 a year towards tourism promotion through the Chamber, through their efforts, through CDO's arcs, and that is, you know, marketing that's done not just across the county or across the state, but across the country, marketing the city of Poplar Bluff and our region, and trying, in an attempt to bring people to Poplar Bluff and visit Poplar Bluff. So, on an annual basis through our budget, you approve $50,000 that goes to tourism promotion, that goes to the Chamber of Commerce. Does that kind of help answer your question, or?
Yeah, so that at least 25% of the revenue that comes in into the trust fund, at least 25% of that goes to the Chamber of Commerce or to promote our tourism convention activities?
Yes.
But more can be allocated, correct?
That is correct.
And that can be adjusted throughout the year?
You know, typically, it's, you know, we hope, I hope, when I present you with the budget in December, that, you know, it's pretty set in stone, but there are always adjustments that need to be made throughout the year for this fund or general revenue fund or capital improvement fund, but, you know, typically, it's approved with the budget outside of, you know, occasional budget amendments.
Yeah, so this is a significant change in what was originally budgeted, correct?
There was about $50,000 that was budgeted for tourism promotion in the 24 budget, so it is an increase of that, yeah.
So, the Black River Coliseum gets most of the money out of that fund to do the maintenance and?
The operation, pays salaries.
The Black River Coliseum?
Yes.
So, I guess the second part of that question, then, I explained how it works as far as financing goes, but the second part was, if that happens, and we do take that money out of the trust fund to pay this other project, which is out in the county, what does that do to the trust fund that's then used at the Black River Coliseum? Will there be a shortfall in that fund to do work that needs to be done at the Black River Coliseum?
We, right now, have a surplus in our tourism tax fund, and also, you know, I think that, you know, kind of the goal of this whole project and the, like I mentioned, the similar tour that this same group hosts in Alabama generates about a $10 million economic impact every year. So, that 70,000 that we spend, that we potentially could invest this year in this project, you know, just considering our tourism tax, not considering sales tax or any other taxes, just our tourism tax, based on increased occupancy rates and increased costs that the hotels are charging for that weekend, you know, this money will be recouped within three years. Is there gonna be things that aren't gonna be done this year that were planned to be done this year at the Coliseum? No.
Yeah, I did some back-of-the-napkin calculations.
Sure.
I kind of came up with about the same thing you did with, you know, increased occupancy from just picking a number out of there, like 50% normal to 100% during the event, you know, and also taking into account they probably double the room rate.
At least, yeah.
And so, that, and then just making some wild guesstimate about increased sales tax revenue, I figured we wouldn't recover that money for three years.
That's about what, you know, just looking at the tourism tax and replenishing that 70 in the tourism taxes, that's what I would estimate, probably about three years.
So, during those three years, then, are we deferring maintenance or operations in any way at the Black River Coliseum? How would that be backfilled?
You know, and that's just looking at this one event. You know, we've had a pretty steady increase in our tourism tax funds. I don't foresee things that are gonna get deferred, especially any kind of maintenance or things like that, no. You know, Greg does an amazing job managing the facility here and maintaining it and keeping it up, and we do have a big project on the, later on in the agenda for some improvements here, and one of the things that he is, when this project gets wrapped up, Billy and Pollard are gonna work with Greg to come up with a comprehensive plan to prioritize what's next to get done here, so.
So, right now, there's quite a bit of money in there, but after this item H and then other maintenance that's been talked about doing, the fund's gonna be down around, what, $100,000 or so?
Based on the, as it stands today, yes, but I mean, we get, our tourism tax is collected quarterly from the hotels, so that figure that she gave you is as of today, so.
But if this event is a big success and all that anticipated revenue comes in, then our hope is that that tourism tax fund will increase faster than if we just didn't do that.
Yes.
The normal amount of money that comes in every year would slowly build the fund up, and as it has in the past, we're anticipating this is gonna accelerate that?
Yes.
Because I've heard wild expectations from, yeah, it'll take at least three years to recoup our money, to, you're gonna recover your money five times over in the first year.
I mean, if you look at all of your, the tax revenue from all of the different sources, I mean, I think that that may be an exaggeration, but it won't be three years, but if you just strictly look at the tourism tax and that 4% that's charged at the hotels and motels, I think the three years is a reasonable expectation.
So, yeah, another thing I've heard from the public is, you know, poor PR relations, you know, from about the operations in the past, and some of the people I've talked to didn't want the city to be partnering with somebody that has such a poor PR image, and I'm thinking that if this is, this is kind of a gamble for us, because if this is a success, it could improve that dramatically. If it's a flop, it's just gonna say, you guys wasted a bunch of our money, you know, so it's kind of a, it's really, it's kind of hard to make the determination as to how it's gonna be, because we can't see in the future how this is gonna work.
I'll try to address a couple of things. You know, the first thing is, they've gotten two concerts of this seven cities stop have already happened. They're averaging between 25 and 30,000 people per event, so they have no reason to not expect, and based on their ticket sales up to this point, they do expect us to be in that same range, 25 to 30,000 people for that weekend in town. The other thing about the safety, you know, this, I mean, I've, you know, I've lived in Poplar Bluff since 2000, I've heard the stories and seen the news reports and all that stuff. You know, this is not a Bricks Off-Road event. You know, I've met with the promoter on several different occasions. The, they have a, their head of security that is in charge of all seven sites is actually a retired Colonel from the Alabama State Highway Patrol. The level of security for this event is gonna be, I mean, it even kind of makes the George Bush trip here look a little pale in comparison when you look at the security. You know, I forget, they have a national private security firm that's gonna be providing security at the events. They also have asked for and are working with several local law enforcement agencies to have 50-plus sworn officers on site for the entire event that have arresting powers. They have a mobile command center where everything, safety-wise, will be coordinated out of. To enter into the facility, you'll pass through metal detectors that will be screening people and are at the same kind of level as what you'll see going through airport security. They will have, they actually will have cameras at all the intersections that they're live, that they're monitoring live in their command center that will allow them to know where traffic is moving and if they can or need to divert traffic to another route, they'll have the capacity to do that, too. So, the level of security at this kind of, this event is, like I said, it's bigger than what we've seen here, and that's bringing in the people they're bringing in, that's what those people expect. I mean, you know, people, the artists that they're bringing in, if something happens out there, not only is it gonna look bad on Bricks, it's gonna look bad on the artists, too. So, they're not gonna come to a place that's not gonna have enhanced security to make sure those kind of things don't happen.
Yeah, I've, you know, thanks for all that, you know, and I'm sure a lot of the public has no idea that all that's happening, and I've never been to Bricks before last week, and I went out there and met with the, I don't know if you call it, the normal operators out there, and I got to take a tour of the grounds out there, and it's very impressive what they've done so far. I commend them for all the improvements they've made out there, hundreds of tons of rock on the roads and hill paths and bridges and low-water crossings and all that stuff, and they've increased their lanes, you know, the entrance lanes from two to eight, and, you know, it's just, it's pretty incredible what's going on out there, and so, they're serious. And I think, you know, with their serious work and then the high level of operations that's coming in with that festival concert, I feel better about it. Originally, I was absolutely against it, but the more I've seen about it, the more, now that you've explained that it is appropriate to use the money that way and that you don't think it's gonna impact the Black River Coliseum operations, I feel better about it.
I'd like to add a few things, David, if you don't mind. Been talking, well, actually, we had a dinner with the promotional side of this whole act, and we talked quite a bit. They're talking about a $20 million economic impact for us, for this. They've already went out to Gonzalez, Louisiana, went off without a hitch, went to Ashland, Kentucky, went off without a hitch, so we're not the guinea pigs here. We, moving forward, this is gonna be an incredible opportunity. They're not talking about this year and next year. They want to make this an annual event, 10 to 15 years. They're already lining up acts for next year. I don't think we should let $70,000 get in the way of our businesses, our hotels, our gas stations, our restaurants. We are looking at an overall economic impact, it's, 70,000 is a trickle. It is nothing for what they're looking at, so I think we need to look at the big picture long-term and not short-term, and that's kind of my two cents, and I'm sure we'll have more comments as we go along tonight, but for now, that's where I'm at, so.
And eco, everything relates to any of the maintenance, any of the, you know, building facilities or whatever's in the city of Poplar Bluff, it doesn't say in the joining counties. Now, maybe that's just too simple of a definition, but everything that I read, the construction, maintenance, and operation, and convention, and tourism facilities in the city of Poplar Bluff, and tourism marketing and promotional purposes in the city of Poplar Bluff. So, that kind of narrows it down to where you could actually use it at if you read it just per se for what it says, instead of trying to stretch it out to include a lot of other things.
Do you have any comment towards that?
Was that a question, Councilman?
That is your statement.
Yeah.
On my part.
Okay.
So, do we know how many, I mean, last I heard, they'd sold 16,000 tickets, and that's been a month ago. I don't know if that's accurate, or do you have any idea?
That was the last?
I actually talked to Chase this afternoon, and they're around 17,000, I think, on the two-day passes, and they have not put the single day out, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
So, will this pave the road from the highway all the way down to Bricks?
Yes.
Is it on the north side of it, or is it southern?
The southern, the shorter of the two, the southern section, is the shorter of the two.
I think it's the north side, the north side's already paved in about a mile, and I think there's a mile to go to get to the entrance to Bricks. There's a lot of new rock on the north side, the south side just has a thin skip, which, you know, if it was really bad weather, it could get nasty.
Well, if this passes tonight, probably shouldn't say this, but I'm going to, I would like to see more cooperation from the county with the city, because over my years, I never see much cooperation helping us with anything, and that's a little bit of a problem for me. This is a county road that, although this may take a lot of their asphalt budget, I don't know. I'll be honest, I voted, walked in here tonight to vote against it, and I still haven't made up my mind.
Yeah, on that point, there was, I was talking to the Commissioners this afternoon, and they were, they said that they were trying to deal with Bricks to get a written contract with Bricks.
Hey, David, can you speak in the mic, or just pick your mic up just a little bit?
Is it?
Just bring it up towards your mouth a little bit, they're having trouble hearing you out there in the crowd.
Is it on?
Yes, you just have to get right on it.
Get right on it?
There you go.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm gonna spit right in it.
Yes.
It's yours, so, yeah.
Okay, all right. So, I was talking with the Commissioners this afternoon, and they were hoping, and this is, nothing's happened on this, but they were hoping to get a written contract with Bricks, that if this happened and it was a success, which they fully expect it to be, that then Bricks, with their own money, without the county, without the city, and without the Chamber of Commerce, would pave the other half, the south leg. And so, at this point, the way I understand it, where all the new rock is, is from the end of the pavement coming in off of FF, going all the way out to the front gate of Bricks, then pass that and up to the next curve where it goes out on the south leg, back out to FF. So, from where the gate is, on, out the south leg, all the way back out to FF, the county was hoping to nail Bricks down into saying that they would commit to paving the rest of it, and that would be a big deal for future events out there, if that happened, but it's like, you know, it's a bird in the hand kind of thing, you know, that may not happen, so.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Why do we need to workshop it and move it to the voting session tonight?
So that they will have the time to get the work, actually, the physical work, done.
Two weeks is gonna really be a holdup for them?
I asked them that this afternoon.
Because it's coming up next month.
Yeah, and they said that they have paving projects scheduled out, not including this one, and if we voted yes, or if all three entities agreed and it was a go project, they were gonna have to reschedule their whole asphalt lane schedule and schedule people. That's what they told me, anyway.
I was just concerned that they waited so late to ask this and to bring it before the council.
You know, that's as much on me as it is on them, you know, just having conversations with them, and, you know, it started with the mayor and, you know, conversations he and I have had over the last couple of weeks, and so, it's, I don't put, don't place the blame on them at all, but, I mean, you know, I will take, you know, yeah, that, like I said, it's been an ongoing conversations that's kind of been going on, so.
Yeah, it would've been nice to be in the conversation, at least to fly on the wall, you know, earlier on, because it's been, it's been difficult to try to play catch-up, you know, especially when I was on the wrong track with the state statutes. I must've wasted at least a day and a half screwing around with that.
I make a motion to move to the voting session to be held tonight.
Is there any further discussion on this matter?
Yes, sir.
I know, well, I was just asking.
I know, well, just asking. Hold on, guys, we're not there just yet, so just a second. Go ahead and give your name and address, but we're in the middle of a motion right this second, so.
There's a motion expanding.
Go ahead.
I'll do that, thank you. My name is Sanjay Varma, V-A-R-M-A. I reside on Legacy Drive, Papa Bluff, Missouri, in the county. Would you like me to wait?
Yeah, go ahead, go right ahead, you're good, go ahead.
Okay. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard. Mr. Richardson, good to see you after a long time. By way of background, I reside in the county, I'm a long-term, longtime resident of Papa Bluff in Butler County. I have a vested interest personally and financially in the continued growth and development of Papa Bluff and the surrounding area. By way of more background, I own a business that's in close proximity to the BRICS facility. We benefit at that business tremendously with every BRICS event that's held. We stand to benefit exponentially greater with the upcoming concert event. So from a purely personal, business, financial standpoint, I stand personally, along with my business, to benefit greatly, and for that, I'm grateful to be peripherally beneficial from that. That being said, as I see it, we have an ordinance and a city statute, and a statute, a statute from the state of Missouri, and a city ordinance that dictate what we as a city can do and can't do. And the ordinance really mirrors the Missouri statute almost directly. And by virtue of that, that's the framework that council has to utilize in order to pass on whether or not this partnership with the county on the paving of this road is permissible. From a practical standpoint, we'd all like to see roads paved, we'd like to see the money used to promote tourism, to promote convention business, and that sort of thing. The statute and the ordinance set forth what money can be utilized for, the tax, the tourism tax money. It can be used for tourism, it can be used for conventions, and it can be used for marketing the same. It can be used, the language is chosen for a reason, it's solely for those purposes, not, may be used for those purposes, or may be used for other purposes, it is solely for those purposes. I believe if I heard Mr. Winters correctly, we, he utilized the language, project, a tourism project. Well, project is necessarily quite a bit more broad than a tourism or convention facility or marketing either one of those two things. I think we'd all agree this is a project, but a tourism project isn't something that this allows us to use as the statute and the ordinance are presently written. The purpose of the tax, which was passed by the voters, the 4% tax, is to grow tourism and convention business in Papa Bluff. We're actually sitting in the biggest tourism and convention facility in the city right now. This is it, and that's precisely where money of this nature is intended by the language used to be focused. I would also submit that the, probably the second biggest tourism or convention facility is the Chamber of Commerce building itself. Those would be proper permissible purposes to spend the money on, expand those, update those. I think it's fairly common knowledge, we'd all agree here, that the building that we're in, the Coliseum, is in need of sprucing up at a minimum, probably overhauls in many areas at the other end of the spectrum, and that's where the money could probably be better used and could be used within its intended stated legal purposes. I might also add, we're on the fringe of downtown here. There's been a lot of public money and private money partnered up, whether formally or informally, to grow our downtown tremendously. You can take a look along Main Street, and you can see, for example, Mimi's in the Royal Cafe, you can see Half Whiskey around the corner from it, there's a new men's haberdashery that's just opened up, I'm told. So we've got renovations of buildings, we've got the biggest real estate company in Papa Bluff that's committed money to opening a downtown office. I mean, how long ago, how long has it been since we've seen any business have a downtown branch for us? That the tourism money can be utilized to continue to grow that downtown and use that to promote the convention, the tourism business, and to market both of those. That's what the, that's what the governing framework really, it's really the only option it gives us. It says it explicitly, it says it solely, tourism, convention, and marketing of those two things. I appreciate the opportunity to address everyone, and if there are any questions that I might answer, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Varma. Mr. Richardson, do you have an opinion on the legal matter here?
Yes, I do, and I've known Sanjay Varma for years, he was a former partner of mine, and a good friend of mine, and I respectfully disagree. I've been asked by members of this council, and by the city manager, and others, about whether or not this expenditure, in conjunction with our partner, the Chamber of Commerce, falls within the Missouri statute and our own city ordinance, and my response has been clearly and unequivocally, yes, it does, this is right down central. This expenditure not only generates a tremendous amount of money under the 4% hotel sales tax, but when you start talking about the exponential benefits from all of our retailers, gas stations, grocery stores, boutique shops, this is generating a tremendous amount of money, and notoriety, by the way, for our community, and that's what this entire Section 92 of the Missouri State Statute, Section 94 of the Missouri State Statute is all about. This is right down central, this is what this money would be used for. If we were just going to go out and pave a county road, I'd have some real problem with that. That's not what this is about. This is about partnering with two different other entities, all of which is going to benefit the city of Papa Bluff more than anybody. Butler County doesn't have any hotels, and they have very few retailers, restaurants, and so forth and so on. Our contribution to this, in my personal opinion, is much more beneficial to the city of Papa Bluff and the citizens than the other entities involved. But to answer you the question from a legal point of view, absolutely no problem whatsoever with Missouri statute or with our own ordinance, if the city council wishes to do this, they are completely unequivocally, undeniably within their rights to do that. It's just a matter of what the city council wants to do. And it seems like the information has been put out there, this expenditure is not going to be to the detriment of this building, which can only receive a certain statutory maximum percentage of that tax dollar anyway. We are involved in some major renovations here, all of which the monies are going to be in that fund, are in that fund, and will be in the fund in the future, so I don't think that this expenditure is going to hurt anything else. We can't use this tourism dollar to buy police cars, or fire trucks, or hire people for this cemetery street department. It's got to be used for tourism, and if you can't look at this overall project and say that this is not promoting tourism, then you're not looking at it right.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
And we could not use this money to pave roads in Papa Bluff? That would...
I'm sorry, counsel, I didn't hear you.
I mean, there's no way we can use tourism money to pave roads in Papa Bluff, because that wouldn't be tourism, that would be...
Can't use tourism dollars to pay for any of the basic operations of the city government, that's correct.
When this first came up, in my opinion, I thought if we're using capital money, I would definitely vote no, because we could use that for city streets that...
By state law and by our own ordinance, these monies are lockbox for tourism investments, and that's what we've been using it for for years, beyond what we've used before this Coliseum. When we paid for CD Ozarks, when we paid for all of the events that we've brought in for our sporting events and so forth and so on, it's been to fill up our hotels, fill up our restaurants, get people to buy gasoline at our local station, all of which pay us 1 cent sales tax to the city for all of that. So when, you can't just consider what the hotels are bringing in. People don't come and stay in a hotel unless they're going to eat at Papa John's, or buy gas at Huck's, or wherever. So got to think about, talk about tourism, when you bring people in, they bring their money, and they have to spend it. They don't just spend it on a hotel room. And that's why this type of event, this event is going to be like the eclipse of April 18th times, or 8th, times three days this year, and we're not going to have another eclipse till 2042 or whatever. This is an event that will become an every-year event, and whether it's at BRICS Off-Road or wherever it is, people are coming to stay in Papa Bluff and spend their money in Papa Bluff, and that's why the benefit of this is so far beyond just that 4% hotel tax.
A question for the city manager. I mean, you've been city manager almost four years now, have you ever, has the auditors, during their audit, ever questioned any expenditures in our tourism fund?
No.
Okay. I mean, when I was city manager, they might question something, but afterwards explained to them, they, I mean, tourism's a pretty broad, and there's a pretty broad interpretation of tourism, and my five years, and even as finance director before that, we've never had an auditor question much of anything on our tourism. And we've got a new auditing firm, so this doesn't go back to just Kraft, Miles, and Tatum when I was there, so. So we have a motion at this time and no second?
Yes, we do.
I still had one more point. Directly related to the question that Councilman Massingham just brought up, I had a, that same question posed to me by a citizen, and the question was, if we can use these funds to pave a road out in the county to access a venue for entertainment, I was told that we couldn't pave streets in town. Is it somehow not appropriate, then, say, to pave the street out in front of the Black River Coliseum, or the parking lots, or the ingress or egress out of this facility?
This money's not being spent to pave a county road, this money is being spent to give to our partner, the Chamber of Commerce, to promote, not only generally, but specifically an event that will generate tourism dollars in the city of Papa Bluff, and that's the distinction. If we pave a gravel road on Bradley Street, which we need to pave all those roads, and the city council needs to come up with monies to improve our street system in Papa Bluff, you can't do it with tourism dollars that are lockbox by law.
Okay, so that distinction, just to reiterate, is that the money's transferred with at least 25% of the tourism fund going to the Chamber of Commerce to provide that promotion? That promotion is the paving of the road?
Just like the monies we spend every year, and have spent for years, to promote the Current River and Jacks Fork and Eleven Point River, which aren't even in the same county that we're in, but it benefits Papa Bluff because we are the gateway to the Ozarks, and so when we promote the Ozarks, we promote Papa Bluff.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mark, did you give a second there?
I'll make a second. That motion, for one reason, I think the public deserves to not let something die without lack of a motion or a second, so.
That's right, everybody will get their opportunity here in just a little bit. Do we have somebody in the audience? Come on up, please. State your name and your address for the record.
I'm Jessica Sanchez, United States. According to the Fourth Amendment Constitution, I don't have to reveal my identity in a public meeting.
If you could get a little closer to the mic, though.
Okay, I just want to read something to hear, my voice is all off, but this is out of your own ordinances, and this is Section 135.160, the tourism tax, and it says, "The city council of the city of Papa Bluff hereby imposes a tourism tax of 4% on the sales, charges, and emissions on all hotels, motels, recreational vehicle park campground sites, and condominiums used at the city of Papa Bluff, rented for less than 30 days, for the purpose of funding the construction, maintenance, and operation of convention and tourism facilities in the city of Papa Bluff, and tourism, tourism marketing, and promotional purposes in the city of Papa Bluff." So there's more of it, but my voice is getting bad. And it says, "All taxes authorized and collected under Sections 94.870 through 94.881 shall be deposited by the city in a special trust fund to be known as a Tourism Tax Trust Fund. The monies in such Tourism Trust, Tax Trust Fund shall not be commingled with any other funds of the city. The taxes collected shall be used upon appropriation by the city solely for the purpose of constructing, maintaining, or operating convention and tourism facilities, and at least 25% of such taxes collected shall be used for tourism, marketing, and promotional purposes." And that's in your own ordinances in the city of Papa Bluff. So according to this, it can't be used out in the county to do anything but here. It says specifically, inside the city limits, is what it's supposed to be used for.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. So you did get your second out there?
Yes.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
So we have, let's go and get a roll call on that, Clerk Phelps.
This is to pass it to the voting session.
To, just to pass to the voting session, this is not the vote.
Councilman Boyer?
This is just...
This is just going to move it to the voting session.
Aye.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
No.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornet?
Yes.
We have five yes votes.
All right. We're going to move on to Item G, the city council will consider an application to the multimodal project discretionary grant program for grant funding for the further expansion of Highway 67 and future Interstate 57. Manager Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as of today, there is $60 million in the Missouri Senate's budget for Highway 67, future I-57 expansion. This funding is left to be debated on the Senate floor and approved in the final budget that's finally sent over to the governor. As this is approaching and as this is going on, we are asking to submit a grant to the MPDG program for federal funding to supplement the state and the local funding that's been a part of this project. The total request for the grant is $91,251,585. And this is for, the total funding altogether would be for Phases 1B, Phase 2, Phase 3, and Phase 4. So if the $60 million... So if the $60 million stays in the budget and is finally approved by the governor and the application for $91 million is funded, that would completely fund the completion of Highway 67. The total project for 1B where we're at now, to the state line, is $182,976,653. This is an item that I've asked you to workshop and vote on this evening because it is due at 10:59 p.m. tonight.
We'll get moving.
And I do have to say, I, these, we submitted similar, to the same program last year for a different amount. So a lot of the work on the application was done. It's a significant amount of work, and Bill Robinson at Smith &amp; Company has done the majority of that work. Bill's done a great job, and he and I were on the phone this afternoon finishing it up until about 5:30 or 6:00, so just want to give him credit for doing the bulk of it.
Well, Arkansas is going to have theirs done if we don't hurry, so I'd make a motion that we pass this to the voting session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, the city council will consider bids received for the renovations and improvements project to the Black River Coliseum.
That's me again.
That is you, Mr. Winters.
That's you again. So the renovations for the lobby of the Coliseum went out to bid. We received four bids. The low bidder was Zellner Construction. They had a base bid of $397,987 and a bid for alternate one of $39,192 for a total bid of $437,179. We're recommending you accept this bid, including the base bid and the alternate one. And alternate one is to replace all the doors that are in the lobby area. We let that in as an alternate, just to kind of see where it fell. You know, after talking with Greg, you know, those doors are 25 years old, and I would hate to spend $397 renovating the lobby and have old nasty-looking doors.
I'm making motion, move this to the voting session to be held May the 20th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 9, action-required items, AA Bill Number 8545. The city council will take action on an ordinance approving Change Order Number One relative to the Community Development Block Grant Project Number 2021-GI-28, City of Papa Bluff, Three Rivers College Stormwater Project.
Make a motion for a first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute Change Order Number One relating to the Community Development Block Grant Stormwater Drainage Improvements Project Number 2021-GI-28 for the city of Papa Bluff.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8545?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute Change Order Number One relating to the Community Development Block Grant Stormwater Drainage Improvement Project Number 2021-GI-28 for the city of Papa Bluff.
Make a motion for adoption of Bill Number 8545?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill Number 8545 has been adopted. BB, Bill Number 8546, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a subaward agreement for the state fiscal year 2024 American Rescue Plan Act, state and local fiscal recovery funds, first responders' equipment grant.
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8546?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute subaward agreement relative to the American Rescue Plan Act, state and local fiscal recovery funds, fire protection grant program.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8546?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a subaward agreement relative to the American Rescue Plan Act, state and local fiscal recovery funds, fire protection grant program.
Motion for adoption of Bill Number 8546?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill Number 8546 has been adopted. CC, Bill Number 8547, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for Dell servers.
Make a motion for a first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance accepting a bid from today's computers for Dell servers for the city of Papa Bluff.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8547?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance accepting a bid from today's computers for Dell servers for the city of Papa Bluff.
Motion for adoption of Bill Number 8547?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill 8547 has been adopted. DD, Bill Number 8548, the city council will take an action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Butler County and the Chamber of Commerce relative to asphalting one half of the road leading to Brick's Off-Road Park.
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8548?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Papa Bluff, the Papa Bluff Chamber of Commerce, and Butler County relative to paving a portion of a county road leading to Brick's Off-Road Park for tourism promotion.
Make a motion for a second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Papa Bluff, the Papa Bluff Chamber of Commerce, and Butler County relative to paving a portion of a county road leading to Brick's Off-Road Park for tourism promotion.
Motion for adoption of Bill Number 8548?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Massingham? Councilman DePew?
No.
Councilman Boyer?
I still have some concerns about the legality, but I do have to defer to Mr. Richardson's assessment, and so I vote yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
No.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have five yes votes and two no votes.
Bill 8548 has been adopted. EE Resolution 2029, the city council will take action on a resolution calling for a public hearing regarding the annexation of property located adjacent to the Papa Bluff High School, 3209 Oak Grove Road, Papa Bluff, Missouri, and owned by the Papa Bluff R1 School District.
Make a motion for a reading of Resolution 2029.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
A resolution with respect to the annexation of a certain unincorporated area to the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, such property being located at 3209 Oak Grove Road in Butler County, Missouri, and owned by the Papa Bluff School R1 system.
Make a motion for adoption of Resolution 2029.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Resolution Number 2029 has been adopted. FF, Resolution Number 2030, the city council will take action on a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the multimodal project discretionary grant program for grant funding for the further expansion of Highway 67, future Interstate 57.
Motion for reading of Resolution 2030?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor?
A resolution of the city council of the city of Papa Bluff authorizing the city to submit a grant application to the multimodal project discretionary grant program for funding further expansion of Highway 67, future I-57, and authorizing the mayor and city officials to execute all documents related thereto.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Boyer?
A resounding yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Resolution Number 2030 has been adopted. Item 10, our city manager report. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we are accepting board applications. We still have some openings we have not received applications for. Plan to submit all board applications to the city council at our next council meeting, so if you're interested in serving on the city board, get an application in pretty soon. If you haven't been down Second Street, take a trip down Second Street. They actually got the tower that was at the former city hall building, came down today. They're moving along nicely. Not a whole lot left over there, but a lot of rubble, so go by there and take a look at it. We talked about benches earlier. Well, I will say, I got a message from Shannon Midiot at the library. Their board did approve the purchase of those benches, but that is not what I was going to say. We have been working with another partnering opportunity with the county and Judge Casey Proctor for the construction of a new bench to be placed in here for our use and for the court's use. I'm not going to name the name of the cabinet maker, but as soon as he's done, it will be installed. Ask me later, and I'll tell you his name in private, so it's not in the newspaper. And if you know him, you can call him and see if you can speed it up any more than I can. So that's all I've got. I appreciate it.
What's the projected completion date for the...
For the bench?
No.
That goes in here?
No, for the old air dam.
Um...
Do we have, do we have that?
I'm actually supposed to meet with him tomorrow and him give me an update on it. You know, I know they're close. I mean, now it's a matter of busting up the rest of the concrete and the floor and filling in the old parking garage, and then they'll have to come in and grade everything and seed and straw, and so. But yeah, I talked to him today, and he and I are supposed to get together tomorrow and him kind of update me on their progress and their schedule.
Now, refresh me. Did this include the old Firestone Building, too?
No.
Okay.
No, it is packed full of records and things of the city, street department equipment. A whole lot of historic records and documents are in there.
But now, we are going to dispose of it, correct?
Of the building?
Yeah.
You know, I...
Because I thought that was...
When we get to the point of building a new building, I hope that city council wants to build it there, and that's part of that that would go away.
Okay, because I thought that was part of this demolition.
No, the old tire shop building was not part of the demolition. It's, like I said, it's being used as storage right now for a lot of city records and things of that nature and equipment. It will be eventually demolished.
Because that looks awful right there.
It does, doesn't it?
It does.
I just had one comment. I came by 53 Browning Junkyard and...
Oh, wow.
Cleaned up.
I will have to say that Clifford Side, I know Clifford passed away, but that is the cleanest that has ever been. And I don't know if code enforcement had something to do with it.
Yes.
But no matter what, the Browning's cooperated, and I really appreciate it because it looks so much better.
Looks good on both sides.
Well, I tell you, there's several houses in my ward, Ward 1, that code enforcement has been going by and different addresses that I've just mentioned to Matt, and they're getting right on it. So if you look around your wards and you see places, let Matt know their code enforcement's getting right on it and getting these places cleaned up, so kudos, kudos to the staff. They're taking, they're taking care of it, so.
He keeps coming to my house, though. He's trying to...
I keep, I keep sending your address in, Billy. You're not in my ward, so I stay away from your house. He's sending your address in.
Make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All right, meeting adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
I need to give you this case because this is going to be...